Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council Meeting, July 11, 2017. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Marty Medina?
Here.
Councilmember Rico Medina?
Here.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Here.
Vice Mayor Ibarra?
Vice Mayor Ibarra is excused with notice.
Mayor Ruane?
Here. Mr. Rico, would you lead us in the pledge, please? We have a few announcements this evening. The beautification task force is accepting nominations for the annual beautification awards program. Applications can be found on the website, as well as in the city clerk's office. The deadline is Friday, August 20, 2017, at 5:00 p.m. Irene, would you like to say something?
Yes, unfortunately, I need to correct you. It's August 18 is Friday. The 20th is Sunday. So, I've already actually gotten an application. I'm very excited. The program has been going on for 20 years now, and what happens is people are allowed to nominate themselves, their neighbors, a property they happen to see when they're walking. It encompasses anyone who's improved their front yard, who maintains it well, anyone who's done zero scapeing, any of those kinds of things. The application is one-page. It's on the front, and it's very easy to fill in, so we hope you take notice. The people who win, we have a first, second, and third prize, receive a small check that is donated by Prudential Realty, and they receive a plaque and a grateful acknowledgement of the city council. So, please look on the city website, or go to the city clerk's office and get an application. Thank you.
Great, and those are for residential and commercial also, right?
Yes.
Yeah, great. The regular city council meeting of August 8, 2017, is canceled. The only regular city council meeting in August will be held on August 22, 2017. We don't have any presentations this evening. Review of the agenda. Anything on this agenda? Okay, approval of the minutes of the special council meeting of June 27, 2017. Any errors, corrections, or omissions? Seeing none to be approved or submitted. The consent calendar. All items are considered routine or implemented earlier in council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested. Anything on consent?
Mr. Mayor, if I can remove item E, please?
Item E, okay. Anything else? Action on the remainder?
Move to approve the remainder of the consent.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the remainder of the consent calendar. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item E is adopt a resolution accepting the Genovin Avenue sewer replacement project as complete, authorizing the filing of notice of completion with the San Mateo County Recorder's Office, and authorizing release of the construction contract retention in the amount of $67,617.75. Rico?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just wanting to bring this up because we talk about budget, but also, we want to acknowledge when we have performance and this project is complete and we are under budget, I'm told, five to $600,000, if that's correct, from the original bid. So, that is a positive and good for San Bruno, and thank you to staff for their work. With that, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second to approve consent calendar item E. All in favor?
Aye.
Item number eight, public hearings. There aren't any public hearings this evening. Item number nine, public comment on items not on this agenda. It is the council's policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation and interaction where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendized pursuant to state law. Would anyone like to address the council? Step up to the podium and tell us your name and your street.
Probably don't need a microphone right now.
Oh, you're on TV. We need a mic.
Oh, oh my God.
My name is Winnie Amet. I've been a San Bruno resident since 1984. I've lived on Cypress Avenue since 1987, and I'm here to request that the boundaries be expanded for my exit. I live at, it's a legal non-conforming duplex at 192, 194 Cypress. It's a very deep driveway, and it's a very narrow exit. Cypress Avenue is probably the narrowest street in San Bruno. It also happens to be one of the busiest because at the bottom of Cypress, at Crystal Springs, there's a four-way stop, so people can get onto Crystal Springs there where they don't have four-way stops on other streets. So, it's very busy. People come from Melbrae, whatever. Also, it's just around the corner from El Crystal Elementary School, so there's a lot of traffic. There is, my house sits at the very top of the hill, and when cars park right up to the edge of my driveway, when I try to back out, I cannot see cars coming up the hill. I cannot see people coming up, and this is a place where there are children because of the elementary school, and I would just like to widen so that cars can't park right up to the edge and obfuscate my vision of what's coming up the hill or down the hill. And you're welcome to check with my neighbor who lives at 192 Cypress. You're welcome to come and look at the property. I'm just asking because I'm a retired nurse, and I used to say to my patients, "We would rather prevent problems than treat crises." I'm asking you to help me prevent the crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. We can't take any action on this tonight, but I would suggest you talk to Carol, the city clerk, and she'll tell you the schedule for the Traffic Safety and Parking Committee, and we can get that addressed there. Thank you. Anyone else? Just tell us your name and your street.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tarek Harara on Huntington Avenue. I guess, probably similar to the last person who spoke, I should probably take this up with parking, but thanks for your time, anyway. I probably live in the smallest house in San Bruno, but it's okay because I worked hard, and I bought it with my own money, and I even fixed it up with my own hands. I'm very proud of that. I just recently planted a small garden to enhance the curb appeal in my neighborhood. Proud of that as well. My house is so small that it doesn't even have a garage, but that's not a problem because every time I come home, I find a parking spot, and I'm inside my house within minutes. I had a conversation with my neighbor the other day. He lives in a much larger house than me. He attends these meetings sometimes, and he seems to be pretty active in the community along with his partner. He tried to convince me that there is a parking crisis in our area. We had this conversation while standing beside our cars parked directly in front of our homes, so that we could stare at them and adore them from the comfort of our living rooms. After he left, I realized that the crisis was believing that there's a crisis. Let's just relax a bit, and remember that these are just cars, most of which will be soon obsolete. Owning a vehicle is a privilege, not a right, and it beats walking in the rain or cold, if you've ever had to do that. Regardless of what some people think, having to walk a few extra minutes to get your car is a blessing when you compare it to not having a car at all. But some people can never be happy. I even know of a person in my neighborhood who has a large house and converted a perfectly functioning garage into an unpermitted, additional living space, and then has the audacity to complain that there's nowhere to park. That person may or may not be here tonight. It scares me to think that he can be a part of the decision-making process that affects where and how I park my car. This exposes a flaw in our system. San Bruno Police Department has guns, handcuffs, and bulletproof cars. They deal with child predators, car thieves, and murderers, and I always have the utmost respect and gratitude for their service. Thank you. It's sad that so much of the resources go to people bickering about parking. We should focus our laws on promoting bicycling and safer sidewalks, perhaps. San Francisco has a beautiful law that's almost self-regulating. It makes it so that unlawful garage conversions are balanced out by allowing other people's cars to park on the street, blocking access to the house, the house's garage, since it's not being used, anyway. The only rule is that the driveway must be small, too small to fit a vehicle without blocking public access. This way, when someone takes a parking spot away from San Bruno unlawfully, San Bruno adds one back. I said earlier that the crisis is believing that there's a crisis, but there's one more that needs immediate attention. As a matter of fact, this matter is so important that the federal government has taken it into their jurisdiction. The Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990 has spelled out a specific set of guidelines that ensure the protection of our disabled citizens, also the right of access and safety to our neighbors with small children, such as myself, come this December. It's my recommendation that the city of San Bruno petition to be exempt entirely from this ridiculous law that only protects the few and not the many, rather than suffer the embarrassment of half-heartedly enforcing it. Again, there are a specific set of non-negotiable guidelines that are already voted on and approved. They even resemble some of the local vehicle codes that we have. It's unfortunate and greatly disappointing to see a community service officer respond to a call of a blatant violation of the ADA regarding a specific vehicle, take a moment to carefully observe the violation, only to return to his vehicle and drive away. So, let's just remove this law from the books entirely, rather than suffer through this confusion of how and when to enforce it.
I'm gonna ask you to wrap it up pretty quick.
Sure. Unless, of course, we have faith in the legislative process and the integrity it takes to uphold it. In closing, Lieutenant Johansson has stated in an email that they typically only enforce this violation when a vehicle, when a stroller cannot go around the blockage, and I'd like to go on record as saying that I disagree with his authority to interpret the law in a manner that he deems fit. Again, by doing so, SBPD continues to encourage people to worship their automobiles, and in this case, at the cost to the children and the disabled. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else under public comment?
Hello. Sandra Mastick Avenue. I wanted to talk about the Fourth of July. Last year, on my block, one household held us all hostage. They pretty much closed down the street, had all their illegal fireworks. The police came out one day, gave them notice. They did the fireworks that night, and either the next night, four patrol cars came up on them as the street was blocked off. They shut off. They warned them, "You're on the mayor's list, don't do this again." They didn't see them light the fireworks, but they did have to wait for the fireworks to stop before they drove away to another address. And I get that you have to see the match hit the wick, but what about the behavior around that match and wick? What about people blocking a whole street so we can't get in and out of it? How about 50 or so people on a front lawn pouring into the street, urinating in our bushes, fighting up against our garages, almost pushing their ways into their neighbor's door? I don't understand this. This, to me, is not a celebration. We can celebrate with our little splinkers. It's fine, it's Fourth of July, it's wonderful, but what happened on my block is anarchy. And I have to tell you, I'm still shaking it, and I'm physically sickened, but what I had to put up with. I didn't go to war. The war came to my neighborhood, and I felt every blow, every bomb, and police came out again, and there were more people this year than last year. It continued for hours and hours. It was the vibration. It was constant, and I just think that instead of looking for that match, what else can we do? Growing up, something like this would have never happened. You had a house party that poured into the street, 10 o'clock. It was stopped. If you didn't have the common sense to slow it down, it was shut down for you. So, now we have a bunch of drunken men driving home in vehicles. What if somebody else were to get hit? Whose responsibility is that? It's no longer the homeowners. The person is too intoxicated as they're driving down our streets or throwing out cherry bombs. I would like to know that next year, we're gonna have some type of preventive action, close down the parties. Mayor, I guarantee you, if that was on your street across from you, I think that would have been down, shut down, pretty quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else under public comment?
Name is Biloff. I live on Maple Avenue, and I have a little bit of a problem between Park Avenue and Genovin is a hill, and at the top of that hill, there's two yellow lines on Cedar, which they just repaved, same kind of a hill. It's got two yellow lines right at the top of the hill. The idea is to keep people away. Maple Avenue has no yellow lines, and it's exactly the same street as the other two. The same hill. The only difference is it's a dead-end street. Now, I live at the very end of the dead-end, and I go up the hill all the time, and I'm very cautious when I get to the top. I stay over as far as I can to the right, and some of them come right over the hill in the middle. Now, I'm not saying that it's gonna change anything, but if it did have a yellow line down there, it would at least alert the people that, you know, it is, you know, a top of a hill, and it's dangerous. Now, I've already contacted the city once, but I never got any answer from them, so anyway, that's all I got to say.
All right, thank you. Anybody else under public comment? One more time? Different subject, I hope, yeah.
I'm so Winnie. I wanted to second the woman that spoke before me. I live on Cypress in San Felipe, and there, on the Fourth of July, fireworks started at 0:00:10 on July 4. That's 10 minutes after midnight, July 4. And there were fireworks going on in the street. My sweetheart was up from Pasadena. He's an ex-cop from Pasadena, and he thought people were firing arms, firearms, but there were, it's not just that it scares pets, but it's unsafe and it's random. And I used to think it was really great that San Bruno allowed fireworks. I'm not in favor of it anymore. I don't think it's a good idea. I think we should leave it to, you know, police officers or fire, someone who's authorized to have it in the park, have it in some public spaces, but don't allow the public at large to conduct their own fireworks, because I agree. I experienced a lot of what you experienced on Mastick, and it scares me. And I was a MAC, I was a Pan Am stewardess, and I flew MACs into Saigon, so I have a little idea when the North was coming into Saigon, the North Vietnamese were coming into Saigon, we were landing, and it's like that. It's downright scary. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. This is Raina Burgus from Florida Avenue. I'm gonna echo both Sandra and the lady here, Wendy. We were forced to leave San Bruno because of the previous year about the fireworks. And when we returned home, our backyard was like basically trash of fireworks. The front yard and the street, I had to clean it. We couldn't even wait for the street cleaners because they did it. It was insane how much debris from fireworks, and we heard the comments. This got to stop. We didn't, we didn't have, we had to leave. Can you imagine, have to actually go away? Because we have Bruno and Bowie. And a year, a previous year was insane. It was insane. In a closet, we had to put them in a closet, and where we heard from our neighbors how bad it was. We need to come as a community and to basically see what are, how can we remedy this? This cannot go on. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else under public comment?
My name is Bridgette Malatesta, and I live on Florida. This morning, I sent an email to the chief of police, board member, and Ryan Johansson, and it was forwarded also to Michael Blundell, and it said this. "Good morning. I wasn't sure which person to write this email to." And then I wrote, "I received a warning citation on my car yesterday. However, it was unwarranted, and someone seems to be making false police reports. I arrived at home at 2:25 on Friday, July 7. I can send the particular video file in a separate email if requested. Attached, you will find the video file showing me leaving on Sunday, July 9, at 11:20 a.m. There was actually someone else parked in front of the house for a time on Sunday. I'm not quite sure what to do about these erroneous reports being called in. It is not as though I received a ticket. It's more the principle of the matter, and I ask to please advise." So, the advice was, and I mean, it was helpful, about the system and the protocol where we get chalked every three days. Apparently, someone had called and said I hadn't moved my car for five days, but I have video saying that, yes, I did indeed move my car for five, you know, in five days. I've actually moved it within a day and a half. And he said that, you know, although I don't get a ticket, I, we have 72 hours from the time that they chalk us to move our car, but my car's been moving, so somebody's making false police reports, and I'm not quite sure how to mitigate that. I mean, I have the video. I'll put it on file, but it feels really disturbing to me.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
If you reported it to the police, I'm sure they'll take care of it. I'll get back to you. Anyone else under public comment? Okay, we'll get right into conduct of business, and our first item is receive a report on the July 4, 2017 fireworks activities.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and city council members. The number of fireworks-related calls for service received on July 4, 2017 totaled 96. This is compared to 108 from the previous year. The peak activity for calls for service began on July 4 at approximately 9:00 p.m. and tapered off just after 11:00 p.m. Complaints of illegal fireworks were received citywide, with many complaints involving the use of both legal, safe, and sane fireworks, as well as prohibited fireworks. As you know, unlike some jurisdictions, it's the policy of the San Bruno Police Department to respond to every fireworks complaint that we receive. In an effort to educate and raise awareness, staff worked with San Bruno Cable to provide public service announcements aired on Channel 1. A focus article with a message from the fire and police chiefs was disseminated via mail by the city prior to the July 4 holiday. Police and fire personnel met with fireworks vendors and reviewed the rules and regulations for the sale of safe and sane fireworks. The police department issued a press release regarding the use of fireworks, and notices were posted on the website and via social media. On the Fourth of July itself, the police department regularly posted enforcement activity updates to its social media sites in an effort to continue this public education effort. In the days leading up to the Fourth of July, police department personnel visited approximately 120 locations where violations were believed to have occurred in previous years. Officers spoke with residents about the use of illegal fireworks, including our enforcement efforts, penalties for the possession and use, and the danger these items posed to the community. Additionally, officers warned residents about excessive consumption of alcohol, the impact of large and unruly parties have on the community, and pedestrian safety, including children in the street. The police department deployed additional officers to conduct illegal firework enforcement from June 30 through July 7. Officers patrolled for illegal fireworks and violations of safe and sane use, paying particular attention to open space areas. These officers also assisted with the education campaign and made contact in those neighborhoods where the department had previously received large numbers of complaints. These officers were assigned during times of peak activity identified from 6:30 p.m. to midnight. Additional personnel were also brought in to work on the Fourth of July. In addition to the normal patrol beats, fireworks enforcement teams were organized and assigned by geographic regions throughout the city from 6:00 p.m. on July 4, 2017, to 2:00 a.m. on July 5. In all, 33 sworn and 10 non-s sworn personnel worked this detail. When officers were able to observe an individual using illegal fireworks, they made use of the city ordinance sections and issued an administrative citation that carries a $1,000 fine per violation. A special emphasis was placed this year on officers patrolling problem areas on foot and on bicycles. This proactive effort resulted in twice as many citations being issued compared to the previous year. Officers issued a total of 22 administrative citations for the use and/or possession of dangerous fireworks. The issuance of citations occurred throughout the city. As in years past, there were pockets of increased activity, and these pockets existed in all areas of the city. As was mentioned in an earlier council meeting, applicable municipal code sections allow for the enforcement of anyone that allows, causes, maintains, or permits a violation of the fireworks ordinance. This year, all citations, however, were issued to individuals found to actually be in possession of or using dangerous fireworks. Additionally, last year, the city council made some changes to the municipal code. Safe and sane fireworks can now be used from noon until 11:00 p.m. on July 4. As mentioned earlier, most activity and calls for service tapered off just after 11:00 p.m. on the Fourth. Of the 22 individuals that were issued administrative citations, nine were San Bruno residents. Approximately 26 pounds of illegal fireworks were seized, compared to 23 pounds the previous year. There was one fire-related event on the Fourth, and another on July 8 that Chief Cresta will speak to shortly. There were no alcohol-related arrests or pedestrian safety issues. When contacting large groups celebrating the holiday, officers generally encountered cooperation. Although you are very aware, I believe it is important to note that the preparation and response to this holiday is a collaborative effort, requires a great deal of planning. Preliminary cost estimate for this year's education and enforcement program citywide, including all participating departments, is just over $62,000. The calculated costs include what is done above and beyond the normal course of business to prepare for the Fourth of July holiday. I'd like to acknowledge the work of the police department command staff for developing a thorough and comprehensive operations plan, as well as all of the officers, dispatchers, community service officers, and police clerks who spent this holiday away from their families in an effort to provide for the safety of the city. Additionally, I'd like to recognize the community service department, who assigned four staff members to monitor activity at the parks throughout the city on the Fourth. I'd also like to extend my appreciation to the public services department, whose staff picked up approximately eight cubic yards of trash following the holiday, compared to 10 cubic yards the year before. Finally, I'd like to thank the fire department, who worked hand-in-hand with police department personnel to provide for a safe evening. As you might imagine, the police department receives a great deal of feedback regarding Fourth of July activities.
So do we.
This feedback includes criticism that enforcement efforts are not adequate, and we receive video and anecdotal accounts of the use of illegal fireworks and other unruly behavior associated with the holiday. On the other hand, we also receive a substantial amount of criticism that our enforcement efforts are too robust and too proactive. We hear from many individuals who do not believe we should expend the resources that we do. They feel that this activity only occurs a few days a year to celebrate a holiday and doesn't require the attention we give it. Police department empathizes with all of our residents, regardless of their position on our enforcement levels. Our main concern is to do our best to provide for a holiday that is safe and as enjoyable as possible. As we do following every large event or operation, the police department evaluates the effectiveness of its planning, its strategy and tactics, and makes adjustments accordingly. Now, this was evident this year by the manner in which enforcement was conducted and the increase in the number of issued citations. We'll conduct the same evaluation and make the same necessary adjustments to enhance our efforts for next year's holiday. This concludes my presentation. I'd like to turn it over to Chief Cresta to speak about the fire department-related issues, after which I'd be happy to answer any questions. Chief?
Good evening, honorable mayor and council members. Beginning of June 28, all booths, all fireworks booths were inspected by the fire marshal or on-duty battalion chief daily. The fire department did staff an extra three-person engine company for the holiday. The fire department responded to approximately 20 calls for service on July 4. Three of those calls were potentially firework-related. Crews responded to a small grass fire on 380 adjacent to Commodore Drive. It took two engine companies approximately an hour to put out the fire and overhaul the area. There were two additional reports of small fires, one at Madison and Pinmont, and the other at Forest and Green. However, when resources responded, those were not located. On Saturday, July 8, at 10:07, the San Bruno Fire Department responded to a grass fire in the area of 300 Courtland Drive in San Bruno. Upon arrival, units found approximately one acre-sized fire, which included several pine trees and a lot of shrubs, in the homes behind Courtland and adjacent to the San Bruno Chinese Church. Response included three engines and a battalion chief, and additionally, a cal fire resource, including a battalion chief and two brush trucks responded because it was a mutual threat zone. Crews spent about two and a half hours putting out the fire and mopping up the area. A neighbor had advised seeing several large aerial fireworks being discharged in the area prior to the fire, and some spent Roman candle-type fireworks were located in the street after that, and that's my presentation, along with the chief. I'm here to answer any questions.
Connie? Before you ask questions, the third and final part of the presentation includes a little bit of information, because we get a lot of questions about how are the costs for the high level of service that we staff and provide over the holiday? How is that paid for? And because it's just a little bit complicated, and a lot of people don't understand, I wanted to walk through an example of how those costs are apportioned to the groups that sell fireworks. This calculation is part of the regulations that were put into place approximately 10 years ago by the city council, following the vote by the residents to allow the continued sale and use of safe and sane fireworks in San Bruno. And just to echo some of the comments that were made by the chiefs just now, safe and sane fireworks are different than illegal fireworks. Illegal fireworks are not allowed in San Bruno, never have been, and our conversation is strictly about the additional And our conversation is strictly about the additional level of effort that goes into monitoring activity in San Bruno related to the opportunity to sell and use safe and sane fireworks in our community, which is really the only thing that distinguishes us from most of our neighbors. So just very quickly to walk through the example, I've used the costs that were outlined in the chief's report. It would just, for the current year, I would just call to your attention that these are preliminary costs. We have not yet fully calculated all of the various costs. This may change just a little bit before this amount is assessed to the groups that sell fireworks. Using an example group, which is one of, I guess we've got a little bit of a mistake here. The number of organizations that sell fireworks, and I see that we've got seventeen or eighteen, it really doesn't matter, total number of groups generates a total gross volume of sales for all groups. So in this example, our dance group had gross sales of $77,000. Again, in our example, the total gross sales for all of the groups who sold fireworks is $600,000. Again, while these numbers may be similar to groups that do actually sell fireworks and the total gross sales that we have had in one or more years, these numbers are generally in that ballpark, but they are strictly examples. The way that the cost apportionment is calculated is the dance group example generated 12.83% of total sales. $77,000 for that group divided by the total all groups gross sales, $600,000, 12.83%. That 12.83% amount then is applied against the total city cost of delivering services both before, during, and after the Fourth of July event. In this example, $62,000, 12.83% is 79.67. So that's how the calculation works. It can't, the exact amount can't be predicted ahead of the event and is based both on the individual group's gross sales, as well as the comparison of that individual gross sales amount to the total gross sales amount. And again, this amount is fixed, or this formula, I'm sorry, is fixed in the City Council's regulations associated with the operation of the safe and sane fireworks sales in our community. It's been used for a number of years now and is continuing. Again, we provide these numbers just as an example. Actually won't get gross sales information from the fireworks vendors and the individual groups for a number of weeks or even months from now, and then we will apportion the costs and receive reimbursement accordingly. So any of the three of us, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
So I guess the question is, the tabs that we charge the booths, do they cover all of our expenses?
Yes.
Okay. And if there's money left over, does it carry over to the next year?
We assess the exact amount of the costs that we incur. So in other words, we calculate our total costs and then assess it, so there's no surplus or deficit.
Okay, fine. To both chiefs, I know you mentioned every year you do a little something different to try to get on top of this enforcement situation. Is there anything specific you can, we as a council can do to improve the situation that you can think of?
From a law enforcement perspective, no. We appreciate the adjustment that was made to the municipal code last year. We think that was good, and I don't think that there's any, from an enforcement perspective, that there's anything else we can ask of you.
Okay.
The only thing I would add, and I think it's citywide, and we do, and the police department does it, is I think the communication via social media and some other avenues have helped get that message out.
Thank you. Any other questions for the chiefs or the city manager? Anyone? Marty?
Chief, for the problematic areas, we're hearing that it was worse in some cases. So what can we, what could we do about that in advance of letting them know how serious that, I mean, we have to see them actually light something off, but I'm trying to figure out, and maybe if I understand, there might be a subcommittee on fireworks, that at some point there was one, I don't, Rico, there is, and that perhaps they could meet with the community and provide some suggestions on how to improve things or identify those spots so that it's very, very clear that there are any illegal, I mean, it's clear that illegal fireworks are illegal, but people just do it anyhow, obviously. So we have, I think we need to do something more, and I don't know what that is, but getting some input from the community to really identify those locations. And if we need to place somebody there full-time, then I think we should look at that. But I think we, there's room for improvement. I just don't know exactly what that's going to be.
I'm not entirely, I'm not entirely sure what you're asking. I will reiterate that we, as far as a preemptive effort to reach out to the community, again, we reached out to over one hundred and twenty residences with written material, as well as speaking with them, based on problem areas we've had in the past. As far as assigning individuals full-time, I don't know that that would be feasible for any, I mean, obviously, we're not the only jurisdiction that experiences this type of activity on the Fourth of July, and I don't know that that would be feasible in any community, given the number of incidents that we are responding to during the holiday. I don't know that that would, that would work. But we are, we're open to any means that would better educate folks as to what we're trying to accomplish, that's for sure.
Sure. And if somebody had video of the Fourth and they came to the police with that video, is there something that could be done with that?
Absolutely. If, the only downside to that is the person who took the video would have to testify to doing so. So they'd have to be willing to cooperate with prosecution, and if they chose to do that, there are actions that we would be able to take. We obviously don't encourage folks to get into disputes with their neighbors, but if they had evidence of a crime and they were willing to cooperate with prosecution, we'd be more than happy to accommodate that.
Anything, Rico?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just wanted, because somebody said it's insane. He was telling somebody not to get engaged in a dangerous situation, so it's better always to call the police, of course. So I just want to make sure there wasn't a misunderstanding. I just wanted to say what some of my thoughts were. I did go to the briefing that they held at the police station that evening. I did go and visit at the Tam Fran Shopping Center, the booths that were selling on the Fourth, just to kind of gauge how it was going, where it was at, were the sales up, were the sales down? I did go that evening on a ride-along, and I did ride-along for a while. I actually walked on foot with chiefs. I also saw a citation being issued to one person over in the area that some people had brought concerns about. And I will tell you that, as I told the public safety personnel during the briefing, I said, you know, I worry about them and I worry about our community, but I don't, what I do not worry about is the devotion, the commitment, and the job that our public safety personnel do for this community, that I do not worry about. I sleep well at night. It is a challenge, there is no doubt about it. Chiefs may not say, but I happen to know, that other jurisdictions in our area, to the north or to the south, were experiencing some challenges as well. The difference that we try to balance is that we up our staff, not only in the fire personnel, but in the police and the enforcement on the streets, to address the complaints that come in. And in a city to the south, they don't have the additional staff, there are no safe and sane, but they basically were, they could not respond to one complaint. They didn't have enough police, and the complaints were too great. So we have to think of, I think, a big picture of what we're trying to accomplish. I know I spoke to a gentleman who does it for the Boy Scouts, has done it for several years, at the end of the evening, when he came back to where I was at the end of the night, and he gave me kind of the history of what they do with those monies and those resources, and what other groups do. So we went through a big, I would say, political debate in this community in 2005. It passed sixty-plus percent, I forget the exact number, but it was, you know, mid-to-high sixties, I believe, and they wanted to go ahead and continue it. The money they're charged at the booths also offset the costs for our enforcement, as well as our cleanup. Where in other communities, they don't have that opportunity. We do have a subcommittee, as Mr. Medina said, and maybe that's something, once all the numbers come to fruition, and maybe we see what good are being done, but also see what else could and can be done to help continue. There was one suggestion of, can't we raise it to $5,000 fine? If I understand, a thousand is the maximum that can be issued in this citation. You cannot go further than that. It is also odd to me that the citation that I saw issued was with a person, with a young person next to them, and did it, and then wasn't too happy about being stopped and being cited. And now it became to the officer about, you know, look what you're doing to my child, how you're harassing me. The officer was doing their job, and they received the $1,000 citation, and I think then realized it and became a little emotional. Well, they're doing their job, and they did it well. I was at the 380 fire. I will tell you that there is no great answer, because as I got ready for the council meeting, I still heard it tonight. So it happened before, it happened during, and it still happened around 5:45 tonight where I live. So I don't have a quick fix, an easy answer. I think a subcommittee is the right place for it to go, but what I will stand firm on is that I thank our city staff, I thank our public safety, and I thank the community groups, the seventeen that sell fireworks, that do it for the right reason to give back to this community.
Thank you. Chief, video was mentioned a little earlier. Any thought of using a drone?
I'm sorry, using it?
Any thought of using a drone?
Yeah, we've actually considered using both a drone, and we have access to a fixed-wing airplane that's a county-wide asset that other cities have also tried to use in the past. We're going to explore the drone a little farther. There's always been this stigma with law enforcement using drones as far as privacy issues, but the fixed-wing effort has been tried before and with limited success. But we will look into the UAV aspect of it that sometimes touches a nerve, so we'd have to probably explore options there, because we don't use that technology now for our routine law enforcement efforts. So it's something we can definitely look into.
All right, thank you. Yeah, it's been rough in the community. I was coming up my block that night, and I ran into two officers in an unmarked car. And I spoke to them for thirty seconds. Within that thirty-second period, they received probably six calls to go around. It was all over town. It wasn't just restricted to one part of the city. So it's a real tough situation, but, you know, the more, I guess, fines and penalties we can get out there, it'll get into people. When you get into people's pocketbooks, you're really going to make a difference, and I think that's what's going to happen. And you stated the fact that, you know, a few San Bruno residents, mostly from outside the city, and it draws them in. And I think the sale of safe and sane surely benefit the sports groups, I guess. The question I've always asked, is San Bruno Pacifica raised money that way? What do the other eighteen cities do? Do they have sports teams? They have all different kinds of things, too. That's number one. And number two, I really think, and I think a lot of residents agree, that the sale of safe and sane has a tendency to bring in and mask an awful lot of illegal stuff. So it's a challenge, but you're doing a great job, I think, with what you have been dealt. So thank you very much. Yes, go ahead.
This is actually for our city manager, so if we collected the $22,000 in fines, would that be offset for the cost for the enforcement? And then would the service groups get that money back?
No.
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 No. Citation revenue is citation revenue. It doesn't offset the costs. According to the City Council policy, I would advise against the idea that such of a policy be initiated in that the actual collection of citation revenue is often significantly delayed with appeals and other legal requirements associated with fine and penalty collection. So it would not be a reliable method of reimbursing the costs. I believe that the policy philosophy that put the program we use in place was that those organizations that are benefiting directly from the sales and obviously providing benefit to the community should be responsible for the overall operational costs that is associated with that program.
Where does that money go? Goes to the general fund?
So currently, it goes to the general fund. We have received a request from the mayor that consideration be given to those funds being used segregated to offset the cost of delivery of the Community Day event, but they are otherwise unpredictable general fund revenues.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Item 10B, adopt a resolution. There are one, two, three, four, five here. Number one, calling for the holding of a general municipal election to be held on Tuesday, November 7, 2017, for the election of certain officers as required by the provisions of laws of the state of California relating to general law cities. Then requesting the Board of Supervisors of the County of San Mateo render specified services to the city relating to the conduct of a general municipal election to be held on Tuesday, November 7, 2017. Requesting the Board of Supervisors of the County of San Mateo to consolidate a general municipal election to be held on November 7, 2017, with other elections to be held on the same date pursuant to 10403 of the Elections Code. Adopting regulations for candidates for elective office pertaining to candidate statements submitted to the voters at an election to be held on Tuesday, November 7, 2017. And lastly, giving notice of election. Carol?
Honorable Mayor and Council, routinely, San Bruno has held their elections in odd years. This year's election will be on November 7, 2017. There are three open positions, the mayor's seat and two council member seats. Unlike other years, each of these seats will serve a three-year term through November of 2020. As of today, two special districts, four school districts, and four cities have filed documents out of a total of seventy jurisdictions to have an election on November 7, 2017. I'm requesting the Board of Supervisors of the County of San Mateo to conduct the general municipal election, as well as to consolidate this election with other elections to be held on the same date. The candidate filing period is between the dates of Monday, July 17, and Friday, August 11. I had put in my staff report wrong dates. These are the correct ones, the 17th through the 11th. If an incumbent does not file to run for office, this filing deadline will be extended until August 16, which is an additional five days. Nomination and papers and declaration of candidacy will be available during those dates in the city clerk's office. If a candidate wishes their statement to be printed in English, Spanish, and Chinese and published on the sample ballot, the San Bruno Master Fee Schedule requires that candidate pay $550. If the fee is less, a refund will be issued to each candidate. The notice of election will be published in three separate newspapers, the Daily Journal in English, the World Journal in Chinese, and now Messengero Newspaper Group in Spanish. And I will be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Carol? Any action on this item? Oh, sorry, I thought he was going to the mic. Anybody from the... Anybody from the audience have a question on this or comment? Okay. Any action by the council? This will be introduced in a resolution.
I'd like to introduce the resolution as written, as stated. Nice to see you again, Carol.
Councilmember Marty Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Rico Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Mayor Ruane?
Aye.
Okay. Item 10C, adopt a resolution ratifying the city manager's proclamation of existence of a local emergency, and ratifying the city manager's immediate expenditure of public money to respond to the emergency. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. As you're aware, this building, our beloved senior center, suffered a difficult injury when a truck crashed into the back part of this, the room that we're sitting in tonight, and damaged, made significant damage to the stage area of this main assembly room. Immediately upon the accident occurring, city staff engaged the services of a competent construction company to provide limited, necessary, immediate repairs and shoring of the facility and securing of the facility in order to deal with the immediate damage. Subsequently, staff has been engaged in conversations with our insurance carrier, as well as with the construction company and structural engineering expertise in order to plan and implement the next steps to expediently restore the building to its operational capacity. I'll mention that in the meantime, we were also able to immediately secure alternative locations for the many and various programs that are operated at the senior center on an everyday basis in order to avoid disruption to the important programs and services that are conducted by the city and for which this building is absolutely necessary. Those temporary facilities, the programs are operating successfully in those temporary facilities, and we are currently secure with those alternative locations through the end of summer, just prior to when school starts, when we will need to make additional alternative arrangements. The declaration of emergency in front of you tonight allows staff, under my authority, to make, to take those actions that are reasonably necessary in order to address the expedient restoration of this building. The city council is aware, because we've done this before, that the city manager, as the Director of Emergency Services, has the ability to declare an emergency, and that emergency declaration needs to be ratified by the city council within seven days of it having been made by the city manager, and it needs to be reviewed periodically after the city council's initial action. In this case, the resolution that's in front of you tonight identifies that your next visit or next review of the emergency proclamation will occur at your next regularly scheduled meeting, which is on July 25. At that time, as allowed by law, we will propose that you subsequently review and take additional action on the emergency proclamation at thirty-day intervals until the emergency conditions have been resolved. It is our intent to move forward, as I said, expediently with repair of the facility. Under the emergency proclamation, the city is allowed to dispense with the normal competitive bidding requirements under state law. That will save us time, and we are in the process of working with the construction contractor to identify the necessary repairs and to obtain a price proposal that then we could, working together with the insurance provider, evaluate for reasonableness and implement quickly so that we can begin repairs. I would caution that it will take some time still before we can initiate actual construction activities. It's necessary first to review and revise the building plans, bring them up to code, current codes. This building is over thirty years old now. Those plans are over thirty years old, but we will be working with our structural engineer to review and revise them, after which they'll be reviewed and approved by our building department, as any other building project in the city is, and then subsequently will work to initiate construction activities. At this point, I don't have a precise timeline estimate, but again, we'll be updating the city council, again, on the 25th of July, and then subsequently at thirty-day intervals. So, you will stay well-informed about our progress, and again, it's our intent to move this forward as quickly as possible so that we can get our senior citizens and their programs back into their home. Be happy to answer any questions, and our acting city attorney is available.
There's only, I only have one point to add, is that under the protocol under state law, that you have the power to terminate the emergency at a future date after you're satisfied that it's passed. All right, thank you. Any questions for city manager or city attorney? Marty?
I don't have a question. I just want to congratulate and congratulate the staff for making the arrangements so seniors don't lose their activities, and for, I know they have the lunch nutrition program running, up and running, which is very important to a lot of people, so I congratulate you for doing that.
Just on that item, if I might make an additional comment, I was a little bit remiss. I know we mentioned this to the city council before, and I would just like to acknowledge the great and immediate cooperation that we received from St. Roberts Church in making those arrangements, and the lunch program is being very successfully conducted in their Hennessy Hall facility that is adequately large and has the necessary amenities to make that a comfortable, a temporary location for that important program.
Great. Marty, you had something?
I wonder if you can explain to the public about the cost, how the insurance worked out, and start with that part of it.
So, at this point, there's very little to report, except to say that the costs for the immediate work to secure and stabilize, shore, and complete the immediate necessary security and other repairs, including that activity, structural engineering evaluation, and the construction, as well as any costs associated with relocation of programs and activities. In short, any and all costs necessarily incurred by the city in order to deal with this emergency and to put this building back into its previous operation will be covered by the city's insurance with a $5,000 deductible requirement, which will be the city's cost. What that will include, under the California Building Code, is any necessary additional improvements associated with Americans with Disability Act requirements. Any new construction in the city and any renovation-type construction in the city, subject to the formula in the building code, is required to do similarly. So, we anticipate that there may be some smallish additional ADA improvements that are necessary as part of that reconstruction. And again, I mentioned that any of the costs that the city incurs associated with its programs will be covered by the insurance.
Right, and any additional improvements would have to be paid by the city?
So, there's two issues. So, taking the example of damage to one's personal residence, let's say a fire or something that damages a portion of the house, and a homeowner might reasonably look at the need to be doing reconstruction activity that was unexpected and say, "Well, let's remodel the kitchen at the same time." Certainly, the city could take a similar action in what you might imagine, and anybody who has experienced that kind of situation knows that such activity would incur out-of-pocket costs for the owner, in that case, us. Insurance will not cover anything that didn't previously exist and isn't necessary to put the building back into its original condition, original pre-accident condition. And in addition, so that's the first issue, it would cost the city out of its pocket. And secondly, time would be incurred, as we do not currently have any immediate plans or any additional work that would contribute to expediting, doing something additional at this point in time. So, if we were to want to add on to that project, certainly, we could do it. We would need to be mindful both of cost and time associated with that.
And in assessing what the needs are, we would be contacting the advisory committee, how would that, how would our group get involved in making that request? Is that something that we're going to formally allow, or how? I'm guessing there probably is a wish list for this building. It is thirty-plus years old. And the kitchen is, how many years old? Thirty?
Same. Kitchen was built with the-
Right, all right, so I didn't know if there was a remodel, but generally, you know, things need to get replaced, and it seemed like the time to do it would be when we're demolishing out that side, but just wanted to bring that up. I'm a little concerned about the wording here of allowing this to be rebuilt, but if you can help explain, or help me understand, that we're going to have checks every month after this next meeting on the 27th to hear the progress and the costs and how things are going.
So, I may need to ask the acting city attorney to fill in. In general terms, the city's subsequent action is to extend or not the continuing, or to act to determine that the emergency condition is continuing. So, staff is committing to provide an update as part of that scheduled stop with the city To respond to your previous issue about additional work associated with the project, if the city council were to direct, I just want to make sure that it's clear that the direction that we're proceeding with right now is focused on getting the building back into operation as quickly as possible. And we're working on the game plan, as I previously outlined, in order to accomplish that. If it is the interest of the city council to take some time to evaluate whether there are building improvements that we might otherwise make, and in particular, building improvements that are not already envisioned in our capital budget and that will be completed according to the schedule outlined in the capital budget, we can certainly do so. I would just point out again that time may be an issue that we would want to consider. So, we have no plans at this point, unless directed by the city council, to reach out to evaluate what additional work we might do associated with the renovation of the damaged portion of the building.
I think that it's a good question. I think the resolution that you have before you tonight is talking about the declaration of emergency and dealing with the impacts of the emergency, so I would want to make sure I'd work with staff and Mark to make sure that any enhancements, we can tie that to the emergency, so there may be an issue that we have to make sure that a new project is sufficiently tied to the emergency so that we're following the law on contracting. And then the second thing, it relates to your earlier question, Councilman Medina, on the insurance. We have our own insurance, and then the truck driver or the company of the truck also has insurance, so our carrier is going to seek reimbursement to cover their costs, so it should have, that should mitigate any impact on the rates related to the city and the ABAG, I think it's ABAG plan, so our risk pooling for coverage of these types of risks.
And lastly, the contractor, the name, have we checked on their recommendations or checked out, do they have any complaints with the licensing board? Who are these people? And just to kind of help everybody understand who they are and who's checked them out.
So, the work that they've done so far was based on a phone call that they received from us night of the accident, when we needed urgently to obtain services that would evaluate the building and secure it. That work has been done, and at this point, the next phase of that work is demolition of the damaged portion of the building and remediation of some petroleum product spilled that was a result of the crash by, came from the truck that crashed into the building. We can, the staff I would mention has been extremely satisfied, probably received more compliments about the work and the responsiveness of the company that did the work than I've ever heard about a construction company doing business in the city before. We can certainly do some additional work to check them out. They're a reputable, established construction contractor, general construction contractor. We can certainly do some additional work to check out their qualifications, background, and experience as part of the work that we do to put them under contract, to complete the next phase of work, which is demolition of the building, of the building, of the damaged portion of the building.
And their name?
Balfour Construction Company.
B-A-L?
F-O-U-R.
And they're based out of?
I don't know the answer to that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff or action on this item?
I'll introduce the resolution. Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Marty Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Rico Medina?
Aye.
Mayor Ruane?
Aye. Item 10D, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Axon Enterprises, Inc., for the purchase of Axon body-worn cameras, Axon Fleet in-card cameras, and Evidence.com digital evidence management solution in the amount of $485,231. Chief?
Good evening again, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. Until January of 2015, the San Bruno Police Department equipped all patrol vehicles with in-car video cameras. These cameras proved to be extremely valuable in providing evidence necessary to prosecute criminal acts and to investigate complaints submitted by individuals against the actions of police officers. These cameras also were very difficult to maintain and eventually failed to operate on a reliable basis and during some critical incidents. The department determined that the existing equipment and software were outdated, and no cost-effective measure was available to rehabilitate the camera program. Due to their lack of effectiveness and reliability, they were removed from patrol vehicles in January of 2015. The video recording in each of the department's three interview rooms was installed in April of 2002. The video system is functional, but the audio quality is very poor. The current system requires officers to burn the video to a disc prior to viewing it or logging it into Evidence, and the current interview room system has no visual aids to indicate when the video recorder is in the recording mode. The system- when the video recorder is in the recording mode. The system is at the end of its useful life and will require a technical upgrade to be compatible with other digital evidence-based avenues. As a result of these challenges, a committee was created within the police department in January of 2015 that determined that video evidence for law enforcement agencies has never been more significant than it is today. According to the United States Department of Justice, departments equipped with video cameras have experienced a significant reduction in citizen complaints. Video evidence not only asserts an agency's credibility and reduces liability, but it also increases productivity because officers spend less time in court due to compelling evidence that the systems provide. The same committee found that in-car video systems, body worn cameras, and interview room video systems are essential in today's policing. While each system has its own specific uses, all three can and should work hand-in-hand to provide a complete picture of an incident in addition to the department's response. As a result of this committee's work, the police department developed a plan to reinstitute the in-car camera program and to continue to research body worn camera options. In fiscal year 2016, 2017, $120,000 was allocated to complete this in-car camera project. In May of 2016, the San Mateo County Civil Grand Jury released a report entitled "Body-Worn Cameras: The Real Truth." The grand jury recommended that each law enforcement agency in the county that has not implemented a body worn camera program do so as soon as practical, but in any event, no later than October 31st of 2017. On July 12th of 2016, San Bruno City Council approved a response to the grand jury articulating the city's willingness to comply with the recommendation by the, by the provided deadline. Law enforcement agencies within San Mateo County have either implemented body worn camera programs or are taking steps to do so, not only as a result of the grand jury report, but also because it's viewed as a best practice. Choosing an effective storage and management system is just as important as selecting the camera system itself. It is critical that a selected vendor be capable of (a) managing video from all sources, including car, body worn, in, in, in the interview room, using the same set of management rules; (b) applying the same storage architecture; and (c) interlinking the video seamlessly for the end user. Dealing with different systems or vendors for each application would be a tremendous burden in terms of support, user training, and costs. The police department does not currently have the necessary video storage to retain body worn in-car and interview room footage for the required one-year retention period mandated by the California Government Code. It would be necessary to purchase and maintain additional storage equipment prior to the implementation of all three of these video programs. The video storage would, would also have to be scalable to accommodate retention requirements in the upcoming years. Police department staff examined and evaluated body worn cameras, in-car video systems, and digital evidence management solutions from six different vendors, I'm sorry, six different manufacturers over the past two years. Staff determined that Axon Body-Worn Cameras, Axon Fleet In-Car Cameras, and Evidence.com Digital Evidence Management Solution, which is also owned by Axon, best meets the needs of the department. While other vendors require the purchase of servers to maintain and backup data on-site, that includes additional costs associated with the acquiring, maintaining, and updating of this equipment, Axon's unlimited cloud-based storage can best accommodate the needs of our department today. In addition, staff found that Axon Body-Worn Cameras, their in-car cameras, and Evidence.com are all compatible with our new security system currently being installed in the police department, including the interview room cameras that are being installed. The system offered by Axon is also compatible and can integrate with the department's relatively new records management system, RIMS, and the associated computer aided dispatch, or CAD. The San Mateo County District Attorney's Office utilizes Evidence.com, which will allow them access to our evidence in a more seamless, seamless manner. Camera upgrades are provided by Axon at 30- and 60-month intervals at no additional cost that will ensure that the camera technology is up-to-date and that the video system is sustainable, unlike what we've experienced in the past. The Axon Body-Worn Cameras and in-car cameras allow viewers to simultaneously playback videos from both devices side-by-side, so you get a real-time picture of what was going on. And finally, our, the tasers that we carry, the, when they, when the cartridges that we use, that discharge data can be, can be uploaded directly to Evidence.com, which is a nice feature. The aforementioned committee was also tasked with developing a accompanying policy. This policy is currently in draft form, and should the city council choose to adopt the resolution this evening, the proposed policy will be reviewed by both the police association and the city's attorney's office prior to implementation. The total cost of this project is $485,501 over five years. The initial cost is $125,000, or $125,213 for year one, with an annual cost of $90,072 in each of the subsequent four, four years. From a risk management and efficiency perspective, staff believes that this investment is a wise one. The initial in-car camera replacement effort that I talked about earlier was suspended when it was learned that body worn camera systems may be implemented simultaneously. Staff therefore recommends that the cost of year one of this program be funded via the previously allocated $120,000 and an allocation of $4,569 from the Capital Reserve, helped to cover year one. Staff further recommends that the annual $90,072 cost for each of the subsequent four years be funded via asset forfeiture funds. The city of San Bruno is a member of an intergovernmental purchasing alliance that has been accepted by the California Department of General Services Procurement Division as complying with the requirements for competitive bidding and meets the requirement set forth in the city of San Bruno's purchasing guidelines. The program also provides a discount of approximately $72,000 associated with this purchase. Staff therefore recommends that the council adopt the resolution before you this evening, authorizing the execution of this contract. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the chief? Marty?
Sure. Thank you. We have a motorcycle. Does a motorcycle get a camera?
Yes.
Okay. I think that was it. I think it's, I think it's great to have the cameras, and I think we're, it's the right move.
Anything else?
I just.
Irene?
I just, Chief, what's the timeline on this? If we approve it tonight, then what happens?
If we approve it tonight, we will immediately contact a vendor and begin to, begin to work for that, work to implementation. We also have the policy portion that I mentioned, so we're hoping within the next 90 days that we would, we'd be ready to, to go live.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or action?
I'll introduce the resolution.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Marty Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Rico Medina?
Aye.
Mayor Ruane?
Aye. Item 10E, adopt a resolution authorizing purchase of one portable water pump and trailer from Pack Machine Company, Inc., in the amount of $156,695.
Honorable Mayor, members of council, as you know, the Water Division's mission is to deliver high-quality drinking water to our residents and businesses, and I'm proud to say that our staff does a great job every day carrying out that mission. A vital part of the delivery of high-quality water is our ability to have the equipment necessary to provide water should there be an electrical outage, an emergency, or during pump station repairs. The Water Division currently has two portable, trailer-mounted pumps so that we can provide a reliable backup to normal operations. While they're not used every day, they provide a redundancy to our system, and both pumps are put into service and tested each month so that when they're needed, we can provide a high-quality drinking water to ensure adequate water flow and necessary pressure at pump stations, emergency situations, such as during an electrical outage, as I mentioned, or during a major infrastructure failure. These specialized pumps, I'm trying to read my writing. These specialized pumps are over 40 years old that we have right now and have reached the end of their useful life, and they also no longer meet the airboard regulations. But they were utilized effectively during the construction of the Tank III, and also during the Glenview Fire Event to maintain adequate water supply, and in the Glenview case, in spite of severe infrastructure damage, as you well know, that the system experienced. The pumps proved vital not only for fighter, firefighting efforts, but also allowed our staff to provide water to residents in the immediate and surrounding areas as well. The 2016-17 equipment budget included a replacement for one of the two portable water pumps. The pumps are specifically designed and built to meet clean water standards, and due to the anticipated costs, staff scheduled a replacement of both pumps over multiple budget years. The resolution before you tonight is for one pump, and staff will include the second pump on the 18-19 budget for council consideration, obviously at a future date. Staff has researched the possibility of renting these types of units. However, the rental cost, in speaking with the company, would be over $9,000 a month, and they would need about a week lead time. They would also require us to sign a waiver that they wouldn't guarantee that they would be free from contamination because the way they're used. So anyway, in anticipation of the bid, we advertised in May on the city's website. We also mailed out to prospective bidders. We received one bid on June 14th from Pack Machine Company for $156,695. The bid from Pack Machine Company of Benicia has been reviewed by staff and determined to be responsive. The pump, the pump provided by Pack Machine meets specifications requirement as outlined by the city. Pack Machine Company is qualified equipment vendor and repair specialist, and it's been supplying industrial pumps to government agencies and businesses in California and Nevada for more than 40 years, and they've guaranteed delivery of the unit in about 60 days. The $156,694 cost to replace the one portable pump includes all the sales taxes and delivery. The amount is within the 2016-17 equipment budget of $175,000 and is funded by the Water Enterprise Fund. Our recommendation tonight is for the council to adopt a resolution, authorizing the purchase of one portable water pump and trailer from Pack Machine in the amount of $156,695, and I'm available for questions.
And any questions for staff? Action?
I'll go ahead and introduce the resolution.
Councilmember Rico Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Marty Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Mayor Ruane?
Aye. The final item is item 10F, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to submit a Transportation Development Act Article III grant application to City-County Association of Governments of San Mateo County for the Huntington-San Antonio Bicycle Corridor and La Mida Park Elementary Safe Routes to School Project.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. Staff has identified this grant opportunity for bicycle improvements along the southern portion of Huntington Avenue and San Antonio Avenue, as well as pedestrian and bicycle improvements in the area joining La Mida Park Elementary School within the city of San Bruno. While La Mida Park Elementary is within the city of Millbrae and not within the San Bruno Park School District, a large number of students attend this school from the city of San Bruno. The area of this proposed application is part of a north-south bicycle and pedestrian route that extends parallel to El Camino Real from the terminus of the Centennial Way Trail at the north to the border of San Bruno and Millbrae to the south. As this overall route extends through San Bruno, it connects San Bruno's BART and Caltrain stations and downtown San Bruno, and provides a link to the South San Francisco BART and Caltrain stations to the north, and the Millbrae BART and Caltrain stations to the south. This grant is through the Transportation Development Act, TDA Article III Pedestrian and Bicycle Program administered by the City-County Association of Governments of San Mateo County, C-CAG. The maximum individual grant through this program is $400,000. Staff has put together a grant proposal that would include the following general improvements. On-road bicycle improvements along Huntington and San Antonio avenues, and pedestrian improvements adjacent to La Mida Park Elementary School within the city of San Bruno. Should be noted that the city of Millbrae will be addressing pedestrian and bicycle improvements beginning at La Mida Park Elementary in areas within its jurisdiction, and continuing a bicycle route into the residential area east of El Camino Real to their BART and Caltrain stations. More specifically, the improvements proposed as part of this grant application will include the following. Bicycle and pedestrian improvements along Huntington Avenue, south of our Caltrain station, through and along San Antonio Avenue to the Millbrae border. These improvements will include pavement graphics referred to as "sheros." These are a painted arrow and bicycle stenciled into a travel lane. Striping and signage, including solar-powered speed feedback signs as traffic calming measures. Pedestrian improvements within San Bruno's public right-of-way in the vicinity of La Mida Park Elementary School would include striping, crosswalk enhancements, and signage. Street rehabilitation on San Anselmo and Santa Helena avenues around La Mida Park Elementary. This street rehabilitation is not eligible as a cost of the grant, and therefore would be paid for by our local match, which is described in our staff report. Work would be done with the San Bruno Traffic Safety and Parking Committee, TSBC, to evaluate a speed limit reduction from 30 to 25 miles per hour along some or all segments of Huntington Avenue and San Antonio Avenue. The intent is to evaluate this area to see if there could be measures to reduce speed and make this a safer route. As part of this work, low-cost improvement measures would be considered to slow traffic along these avenues, including, but not limited to, traffic circles, medians, lane narrowing, and bulbouts, using low-cost measures such as paint, delineators, reflectors, planter boxes with landscaping. A speed survey and review of collision data would occur after implementing identified low-cost traffic calming improvements to assess the benefit of the selected traffic calming improvements as part of work by TSBC and their follow-up evaluation. Staff's grant proposal would result in eight of 10 possible competitive points for this application and breaks down in the following way. The overall project cost is $642,000. Of that, the proposed local match is $256,800. That amount is broken down in this way. $143,000 would be accounted for by assigning the already-approved La Mida Pump Station road rehabilitation funding to this application, and in addition, there would be new local funding in the amount of $113,800, and this money would come from either Measure A or gas tax funds. And then the grant request. The grant request totaling eight of 10 points would be $385,200, and again, the maximum funding possible through this would be $400,000. And again, the total cost is $642,000. The proposed improvements would add another segment to creating a safer, more convenient, and comfortable north-south corridor for pedestrians and bicyclists between the Centennial Way Trail terminus connecting San Bruno's BART and Caltrain stations, downtown San Bruno, and extending to Millbrae and the Millbrae BART and Caltrain stations. The proposed improvements are supported by the city's general plan, Transit Corridors Plan, and the recently adopted San Bruno Walk and Bike Plan. These proposed improvements would connect with surrounding community improvements being pursued by the city of Millbrae, and would leverage roadway rehabilitation work already approved on Huntington and San Antonio avenues from Canes to San Ynez avenues, as well as build upon the city's recent past success to receive approval of a $914,000 grant for cycle track, protected bike lanes, and pedestrian improvements from the terminus of the Centennial Way Trail to San Bruno Avenue. Therefore, staff is recommending to you tonight to adopt the resolution attached to your staff report, authorizing the city manager to submit the grant application. That concludes my report. I would be pleased to respond to your questions. Thank you.
Any questions for staff at this time? Marty?
So I know, especially recently, we got a request for some improvement, safety improvements, stop signs, which would be part of the traffic calming for the whole street. So I think the good news would be, Tim, that it's coming. It sounds like a great project. I'm hopeful that the cost estimates are there for it, because that street is in very, very bad shape, near reconstruction. bad shape, near reconstruction level. I'm encouraged, too, that the striping and paint, and that would include the red curb that would be necessary to provide the line of sight. Is that correct, that the paint does include red curb?
Right. Again, this, these measures would need to be evaluated by TSBC, so the measures that we spoke about in the staff report would be measures that would be presented and evaluated by the TSBC.
Okay, all right. Well, I think it's great. Look forward, hopefully, it's all going to work out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Action?
Real quick, and I apologize, just, and I know I may, but it, going all the way down Huntington, and is this going to potentially, again, narrow down?
Potentially. Again, looking at measures to slow traffic to make the route safer. So the measures I mentioned in the staff report and described here verbally, narrowing lanes with striping, circles, traffic circles, those kinds of measures would be evaluated by TSBC.
But not eliminating lanes? This is just talking about the traffic?
No, not eliminating.
Just wanted to be clear, because I know there was another item prior, but this is totally, yes, just so people will understand.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Action?
I'll introduce the resolution.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Marty Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Rico Medina?
Aye.
Mayor Ruane?
Aye. Item 11 reports of commissions, boards, and committees. There aren't any comments from councilmembers? Anything? Marty?
Actually, I have two. I made a mistake. On June 13th, I voted for permit fee increases. I had a different understanding of that permit increase, and I wanted, I thought that the permit increase would require justification, a report back from the council on that fee increase. So I apologize to the council, to staff, and I'm asking, although Vice Mayor Abara is absent with notice, that we bring that item back for a revote. My second comment is to announce the second parking meeting that I'm holding for the community. It will start on the 15th, July 15th, at St. John's Church located at 480 South San Anselmo, I'm, sorry, 480 San Anselmo North, near Sylvan Avenue. We'll start the meeting at 1 o'clock, and we'll probably go to 3:00. So I invite all of you to attend. Thank you.
Rico? I just wanted to acknowledge that last night they held a celebration of life at the San Bruno Recreation Center, so I want to thank staff for the support and allowing the family to celebrate with the community. And what I always am proud of most about this community is the hundreds of folks that showed up, told some of their personal stories about Coach Ken, special man who's done a lot and touched many people's lives. But what also was a touch of class was one gentleman acknowledged that there were some veterans at the very top of the bleacher, and everybody in that room, hundreds of people, stood up, turned around, and gave them a rounding, a standing ovation, and a long applause. One gentleman turned to me and said, "Enrico, that's why I love this city. It's got class, and it does have a heart." So I wanted to share that because it was a moment that was unscripted, but it was a beautiful one, and it shows about our city. Thank you.
All right. Two things. First of all, the parking, is that a subcommittee meeting, or is that your own thing?
It's my own thing. I wanted to be able to get more input from the community, and we haven't had a open meeting yet, so this is the second meeting that I'm holding, hosting.
I'm just curious why we didn't, we have a subcommittee set up for that, why wasn't it through the subcommittee?
We didn't get the second subcommittee meeting, or subcommittee member onboard until recently, and I, and I believe that this issue is so big that it deserves the input, and so that's why I'm holding the meeting.
All right, to staff, to the city attorney or city manager regarding Marty's first request regarding bringing that back, is that something we should vote on?
Yeah, the, the, the issue of bringing something back would be in the form of adendizing a vote to change the, to the prior action. Basically, you'd be revisiting the decision, but it'd be just like a new decision, like you brought it back, not as a reconsideration of the prior vote, but as a new action item. So I think, I think because it's something that you've already acted on, it seems appropriate that the, the council either informally poll yourselves or have a vote to figure out if you want to bring it back to, for a future agenda, because it's agenda-setting, you can do that on this particular item.
Okay. Marty, would you like to make a motion to bring it back?
Sure, I'll make that motion.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor here to bring the discussion back to the city council. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. So the motion fails, and we'll have to revisit it when there's five, I guess. Tonight, we have a little bit of sad news, actually, a lot of sad news. We lost a very, very warm and very dear friend of the San Bruno community. Vico Ivansich is the husband of Marie Ivansich and daughter of Laura Davis, and Donna Ferris, passed away on Saturday, July 8th. He came to the United States at age of four, and he met Marie before he left for Korea, and he served in the army, and he wrote to Marie every day for two years. And while in Korea, upon his return, they married, and Sunday, July 9th, would have made their 62nd year of marriage. Vico and Marie moved to San Bruno in 1955 and raised four children. He was a former member of the San Bruno Lions Club and current member of the South San Francisco Elks Lodge. And if you don't recognize the name, you would recognize him behind the counter of Roma Deli in San Bruno. He was the co-owner from 1968 to 2003. He had an easygoing personality and always had a smile on his face and never seemed to be having a bad day. I ask you to please keep Vico and his family in your prayers. Vigil service is tomorrow night at 7:00 at St. Robert's Church, followed by funeral Thursday, also at St. Robert's. So please join me in a moment of silence for Vico and his family. Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.